Here's what you've used in the last 10 years, right there. That's called right here.
Yeah, there's one three, one four, yeah.
So you had July 11.
Called special council meeting to order at 6:30 on Tuesday, February 26th, to discuss Midwest Energy Agreement. Take it away.
All right, all right, guys. Here's what, uh, here's what we're, I thought we'd spend a little bit of time. I won't yet ask any questions you want to. And I, I won't run it on you guys can, if you have questions. But essentially, I want to make sure you guys understood what it is we're doing. Uh, currently today, you've got a contract with Midwest Energy. We've had it since, uh, March of, uh, 2014. And I thought it'd be best to go ahead and explain to, this, this right here is your, the St. John's load profile. Obviously, that's January 1st. Goes up and higher in the summer and then drops down. So the, the squiggly line is your hourly load profile. That's every single hour of the year. Then this beige block is what we've got covered with what's called a firm, uh, resource, firm capacity and energy resource from Midwest Energy. So we bought all from Midwest Energy. That piece is at a combination capacity and energy price. And everything above that, you're buying as non-firm and is priced at the energy market. Okay? So like, if you look on those months on here, in the, uh, March and April, uh, you are, um, you know, you actually have more coming in some hours than you, than you have load down here. So if I scroll down, if I look at July, this, this July, right about here, you take this and you blow it up to this one month and you can see, you know, partly any hours, a few hours. It looks like this every, every month you got, you know, this is, you know, this is during the day. That's one day, two day, three day. You don't really see the difference between weekends and, and, but you see at night. This would be at night, during the day, night, day, but always above. You scroll down here to December and it looks more like this. You still have the distinct, uh, days, but they're not quite as pronounced because of no cooling and whatever, you know, basically. But your load covers that. So you got a few more hours of dip. Then you go into this October, which I grabbed October as one of those, that's, you know, this month over here where you had a lot more hours dipping down. This is what it kind of looks like on a blowout thing here. You obviously in October, you know, probably late September or October, must've been hot. Probably it's air conditioning on there and then you, then you ran back in and pretty much leveled off and your load was down a little. So that was the one megawatt. How this, how the one megawatt is priced, and I'm going to jump over real quick and look at a, look at our bill, um, our current bill. This is our bill in December and you have this, two parts of it here. Uh, this is the, this is, this right here is the, is that beige piece. And you pay this, we're paying 1.01 megawatt. The only reason did that 1.01, and Marsha, you remember that, we had, we had 1.2 in there, but we, when we lost the grocery store, we got that away. But we kept the 0.01 just to retain this extra transmission, the, the second megawatt. But we had, so that's what we had. We paid $9,728 per month, per megawatt. So like for, on this particular month, it was $9,824. And then all the energy, all of that energy under that, that beige block, which is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, was a 3.2 cents a kilowatt hour that month. It varies from month to month because it's tied to their system average cost. They take all of their resources, dump it in a bucket and then they average it out. And this particular month, it averaged 3.2. That's important and I'll, I'll go back to that, but that's where that is. So then this is what we paid for that block, $33,833, which was a good portion of our, of our load. Then everything above that, of course, this is December, so if you remember my December graph, there's not that much above it, but there's some. Uh, maybe, uh, maybe what is it, about third or less than a third, a quarter? 25% of the total amount you bought during the, during that peak time, you had left over and you bought it for $7,000. And this averaged about 2.6 cents a kilowatt hour. So it, it was the, uh, non, first, we have that, then this transmission charge, and then this is like the service fee, the market service fee for access to the market through the Midwest Energy or whatever. So our total bill that month, this, that December was $54,000. Okay? And that was from those two, you know, so I'm going to jump back, I'm going to come back to this a little bit, but I'm going to jump over here to talk about what we're, um, we're looking at doing. Basically, this, this, if, in March, we got, end of, end of February here in this month, this is going to go away. So this piece right here will go to zero and you don't have any, any of your load covered, if you will. Okay? And so over here, based on, I like, this is 100% of your load right here is, I put percent exposed to the market. So basically, if the market moves, if we don't do anything, if we don't buy any firm load, we're just basically, uh, subject. So the month, the months and hours that the market's real low, this is what, how we'd like to be. But if the market moves up, then our costs would skyrocket. So it's kind of 100% exposed is not really a good idea, um, because the market doesn't move. So I'm going to, here's, here's what we, if we go back here, I'm going to look at what the, uh, market has been. I'm going to put, uh, a one here just for this illustration. This, this is since 2010 and I've tracked what the, the various markets are now. 2010 is, uh, when we started with a different Midwest Energy contract, so I have an idea, have pretty good numbers. But this new market that was developed for everybody started in 2014 when we started this new contract. So this, this just gives you, it's a visual, if you will, but it's not really relevant because the market's changed. But this was the hourly market right here. See, as you can see, it spiked up and it was running around. It was running from, anywhere from $30 to $60. That's six cents a kilowatt hour to three cents a kilowatt hour moves around. And that, that's what this, this line is. Then right here, this new market developed, but then you still have this hourly day ahead called day ahead or real-time market. And it's, this is what it's run throughout its course. This blue line is called GRDA, Grand River Dam Authority. This is a capacity and energy-based, uh, agreement that a lot of cities have. You guys don't, but other cities do in the area. And the reason I put it in there, so you can get an idea. That number is tied to system average cost of Grand River Dam. It's got hydro, it's got all kinds of agri. This is where that price was running. So we got really high, got seven, eight cents a kilowatt hour for this product. This new market, so we were up in, they were up in here when we were entering into this new agreement that we're in now. We obviously didn't want this, but we were seeing that. So, so it, since with that new market has adjusted accordingly and it's been in here. So this blue is where it's, it's set out the rest of the way. So you can see, it's kind of settling where the market is, if you will. But I want to take that off because it's not really relevant to you. I just wanted you to see how a system average fixed cost has changed. I want to take that off. So, uh, you know, so we're looking at this market now. This right here, this green line here and this dotted green line are what you're buying your, that, that beige piece been. That's that fixed system average price. And it's got with that, if you remember, I had two pieces of it. I had the energy charge and the demand charge at 9,800. This is what the energy price has been with that, that resource. Okay? So the energy price has been pretty stable and it runs right along here, which is right around $24. Um, but when we add that $9,800 to it, we couple it together because they come together, this is really the price we were, we've been paying right here. So we've been paying around four cents a kilowatt hour for that, that block of power. Everything above that block of power, we've been buying it at this rate. Okay? So sometimes it's higher, but it's running down here in the last few, in the last year and a half, it's been pretty low. Okay? So that's what, that's, that's, you know, why you'd say, well, I'd like to buy, I don't want to buy any of this and I'll buy all of this. And that's not a bad strategy, but then, you know, this, this, this could, we could see this again. So this piece that's being offered to us right now is this red line. This is the $24 piece. It's around the clock. It doesn't have the capacity and it's just energy only. Okay? So that's where it adds. I just want to show you in relative relation to this non-firm energy price, which is the beige line, and then also in relationship to the energy price that, that's, we've been buying, but coupled with that. So I split them off. So that's important. But you can see that 24 is right there in the sweet spot of the markets. Okay? The difference is, this is a backcast. This didn't exist because we weren't on it, but I just want backwards to look at, had we been on this last year, instead of, but what we're doing is we're looking at it going forward. If we go forward, once we go forward, we know, the only thing we know is the price of this, because this is a fixed price, it's not relative to any. This, we're going to guess. So unless somebody has a good, or an actual idea of what this price is going to be going forward, we're just guessing. There's a market, there's market projections, there's market forecast. And obviously, the company that's selling this takes their, their whole portfolio and averages it in there. And so they, they're able to predict the market probably better than we can, but they certainly are willing to commit to $24 on out forward for 10 years. Okay? And then, then we would not be subject to these nuts. We will be for everything above that amount. So I'm going to go back to this chart right here and say, so now we're looking at how much of this, 100% exposed to the market, so we're all on that one beige line right now if we don't do anything. We're going to come up here and the, the decision before us on this draft contract, or the contract is to buy one megawatt of that energy only at $24. Okay? So where, where all of this was at an average of that upper green line of $42 is now coming in at 24. Okay? That's what we're going to be right here for 10 years. And it does, and so that shows you that we're covering, we're back to 26% of the market is 26. So it seems like there's a lot more up here, but when you got all of this amount of hours covered, there's only 26% of your energy over the next 10 years at current levels is exposed to the market. So what does that tell you? Is that if the market goes up a lot, like really high, then we might wish we'd have a little bit more of this, because we're going to be paying, you know, much higher prices for everything above it. If it goes really low, lower than it is today, then we'd just obviously wish we'd had a little less of that, because we'd be behind the market. But it's, again, we're trying to find a spot that we'd be comfortable with, that the city's not taking a lot of risk. Conversely, you, you say, well, then why wouldn't we take it all? Let's just say we're going to take three megawatts right there and we're just going to do that and there's no risk. There, there, there's a lot of risk with this and that's even more so. You're, yeah, you're covering all your load at 24, so everything that you're loaded, every, every hour but one or two hours there, you're going to be buying your energy at $24. The difference is, you're buying a whole bunch of other energy at $24 that with that link, you turn around and sell back into the market. And if the market's greater than 24, then you make money and the city would be benefit. But every time that's lower than 24, you lose money. And so therefore, you're just, once you go long, you're just basically putting it into the market and saying, I think, I think this is better than the market all those hours. And then you're, you're not, I mean, I don't think that's prudent for a city to do that because you're not, uh, you know, you're not, you don't want to sit there and say, oh, I want to capitalize on this. So that's why the three, the one megawatt is a, is a good sweet spot, because it keeps you 80 or 74% of your, uh, load is, is covered with this, this piece of, uh, $24 fixed energy price load. The rest of it's exposed to the market to, to benefit if it's, if it's higher pricing. Now, what, uh, what, what we, I want to make sure we're not, one thing that we don't get with this, that we have with our current thing, is capacity. Okay? You, you, right now, we're buying one megawatt of capacity. That was the difference between that little, the lower red dotted line and the higher one was that $9,000 capacity charge that we, we've got. That doesn't, this doesn't have any capacity, so you need to bring your own. The city is required to have some capacity. I wanted to show you. Capacity is, is basically the capacity that you put like in there. So I'm going to put down, uh, a amount of capacity, what, what you're, you're required to have either purchased or your own power plant to meet 100% of your, uh, peak load, which would be right here, plus an additional 12% above that. That's reserves. You need to have that much capacity in either purchase agreement or your own power plant. So Jeff's got a power, you guys got a power plant there and this is, this is the, how much, this is three, you know, and this number might not be exactly the same number that you have, but that's pretty close to what he needs to be able to go out and prove in the middle of the summer. And if you can't do that, then the market, the SPP market will then put capacity to you. So if you go out and generate and you can only generate two and a half when you're testing them for two hours in it, Jeff, that you had to run for two hours, and you go out in the hottest day of the summer and you run for two hours and you can only pull two and a half megawatts, then you only tested out at that much. The market, the SPP market, which is Midwest Energy through into the market, will then put a megawatt to you at the market price. Okay? So that's not, that's not something we really want to do. But because that's, then you'd be buying that for the whole year, for the next year you had, had back to the $9, okay, that's a megawatt. So, so, but you've got to have that much, so we'll be required. So if you don't run it, and so what Jeff's kind of concerned about or thought about was maybe to be able to pull that full amount will be a little taxing to the system at the, at all time. So Midwest Energy has offered to sell some capacity, whatever we wanted, whatever any of the cities wanted, at basically, it's almost a third of the price that we're doing now. So that 9,800 we're paying today, they're going to do it for 3,500. And you could buy less. So you have two agreements. One's the energy agreement, the other is the capacity agreement. The capacity agreement is buying just a little bit of, of capacity. And I'll show you. So right now, you've got to, you've got to be able to generate or buy up from here to here. We're going to, if we buy, if we, if we fill out a little bit of capacity there and then that contract will put a half a megawatt, that's this line right here. So you will have a half a megawatt purchased, then you have to be able to provide generation between this much and that. So now you just dropped your amount you have to generate with your plant on that testing day to three, instead of three and a half. So see, because you're already buying this. So it's just the, the difference between here and, this didn't change, you just bought this. So we'll pay for that. And then at some point, if you get the plan where you're comfortable running, we could drop that off once within that agreement. So if we all of a sudden think we can test, then you either add generation or you get that point where you can run the three, three and a half, or you lose some load or something, or load, you know, more efficient or something again, and you're only pulling, you know, those peak numbers are, are down a little bit during the summer, then we just drop that away and we don't, we don't need it anymore. But this contract, this contract is, we're, right now, where we were paying, buying this whole, the, the whole megawatt for $9,800 a month, we're only going to be buying the 500 for 3,500, so about 1,700. So that payment, capacity payment will go from $9,800 to $1,700 a month. Okay?
So we'll be buying roughly 20,000 a year instead of 110 or 117, whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah. And I, okay. I'm going to show you. So we come back over to here to this, the bill that I, we had Midwest Energy, we said, go back, let's just say, had we been on this last month, okay? This is the bill you got. And keep in mind, this is this. So we said, we would have gone in here and, and we took, uh, so this is the new bill, exact bill that we would have had had we had that contract. If you look, there's the half megawatt times 3,500. So the price went from 9,700 to 3,500. Now, part of the reason it went from that price, you guys, uh, Lorna's not buying any, Stafford's not buying, you're only having to buy half, but Colby and LaCrosse are having to buy more. But the thing was, we all got together when we met with them, we said, that's, we're not paying 9,800. That's, that's too much. The market's come off on that, softened on capacity. So they came around and restructured their capacity arrangement to 3,500. Well, so we, not only did we, the price went down, but our volumes have gone down. So, so now you're just buying a half. So you, this is what you'd pay for capacity instead of this. Now, the other part of it is energy is 3.2 and our contract is 2.4, 24. So our, down here, that, that one megawatt of energy that we're buying right here is 24. So we're buying the same amount of energy. Now, this is a little different because we're buying that 1.01, but it's pretty much the same. That energy was 32 for 24,000 for a total, for that one piece, that beige piece is 33,000, where we're buying it for 19,000. Then over here, we're basically buying pretty much the same amount of extra power on the market. Only difference is that little bit right there, the difference between there and there, is we're paying the 7,000 and here you're paying basically the same amount, you're paying a little bit more. So, but, uh, that's, that's that difference. And so your total bill, everything else is the same. This is the same, the transmission is the same, everything else is the fees of Midwest Energy. So $54,000, our bill would have been $42,000 that last month had we been on this. Difference of $11,800. Okay? So you had two things. You had the, the majority of the savings comes from right here. That's, you know, $8,000 of it right there. The rest of it came from here to here. Now, one of the things that you, we want to look at is that you can't always expect that because if you remember on my, my chart here, if you look at this, um, my pricing chart right here, that's taken one of these months, this month was higher, energy price. See, this is the three cents, so we're dabbling up at that 3.2 right here for that energy charge, uh, is where, where that price is. And that's, that's a higher month. Had he taken this same bill comparison from here, that energy charge would have been cheaper on their piece and we would have paid a little bit more for our $24. The total savings would have been not 12,000, it would have been $9,000. Okay? So I don't want to, he just, he grabbed, we just grabbed it and it turned out to be, he grabbed one of the higher energy price. But again, if he'd done it this month, it would have been a lot higher. He would have saved about $20,000 in the month. So it's, it's substantial difference. So, so I, I went in there with, with that and then took this here to look at if we, if we buy this capacity, you, you keep your own plant prepared to run under the testing conditions from here to here. We buy all of this at that $24 and everything else at market, then you would basically be exposed 26%. We figured we'd save $120,000 off of last year. That was last year. So that, and keep in mind, that's the last year the market was pretty low. Okay? If it goes up higher, then it's going to be much off of that. So that's what, if, if we'd been on this last year, our bill, our wholesale bill would have been 200, if we, we paid 424, it would have been 120,000 less, would have been 309,000. So quite a bit, quite a bit. And they, uh, to, to show you, uh, this, this is where we'd be. And I don't really want to go, I wouldn't recommend going higher, but I did want to point out one other thing that, that a couple of other cities have talked about, and we don't have it in this agreement, but other cities and other non-Midwest Energy related cities have, have negotiated an arrangement with Next Air to do what's called a five by 16 power supply. So it just, it's, they offer five days a week, 16 hours a day. So it fills that peak. So it's not, they're not, and I'll show, I'm going to show you a visual of another city that, that I worked with that, that did buy this and show you how it works. Okay? They're buying, see that, you know, instead of buying like I showed you, another megawatt here that would just run straight across there and see they're long all those hours, it's just 16 hours when those peaks are hitting. So it would go right in here, you would buy this power that would go right in here and come down here and it would just fill that up. That price is higher than 24 obviously, because that's going to go during the summer when your prices, but that's the highest time of the market. But it gives us an option. Midwest Energy, we've, we've kind of brought them along on this thing with this, with this Next Air and this option for us. So we, the base load is easier for everybody to understand, so we went ahead and moved them forward with that. But I've talked to them and I said, you know, there's a possibility that products out there that we may want to entertain that. Some of our, you know, you guys and the other cities may want to look at a five by 16 and we, we can do that within this agreement. We just have to do it now. We've got to get going. And that would be something that wouldn't start until June, July, August and September. So it would be, if we want to. But we'll want to, you know, the price may be $30. I don't know what it is. We'll have to get a quote for it and see what they'd do and how many years they'd do it for. But it's something to, to consider. So right now, uh, you know, if, it's not a bad time to do it and I actually kind of like the product. This particular city right here has been on it now for a couple of years. They've been doing this and it fits right in their load. See, they don't buy it on the weekend, they just buy five days a week and they don't buy it on the weekend when their load drops down. So yours would be very similar to that. Um, and then, so that's something to, to consider down the road if we want to, but right now, we would be right over here with, with this kind of arrangement. Then, then if you, let me see if I'll, this other, I wanted to show you kind of what this means to your community, so you kind of get an idea. I don't want to, I don't want to say, because we do, you guys know the fuel adjustment that we, that we do. We, we, it's a pass, pass through or pass through savings or credit to your consumers and that's called energy charge adjustment. Basically, in your rates, we build 3.1 cents a kilowatt hour in there. So we have a rate of 8.8 cents. 3.1 is a purchased power. Anytime the price of power is higher than that, it's a pass through as an adder. If for some reason your power came in at 2.1 cents, everybody would get a penny per kilowatt hour credit that month. So now, we, we've also gone to the point that we, we've taken 12-month average, so it's not month to month. It's a 12-month rolling average, so you don't see the spikes. But, uh, I just want to show you, this is, this is your, this is what your wholesale power has been, for instance, August 2009. This red line is the fuel adjustment. So this price is included in your rates. Everything else is what we pass through as a fuel adjustment. If you remember back here, we had a three-year contract beginning in May 2010 and it ended here and they terminated in, in, uh, March of 2014. This was a very favorable contract. We averaged about three and a half, three, four cents. So the ECA was pretty small. Went to this new agreement, so we, for the last five years, we've been up, up a little higher on the purchase power cost. That's all the cost we're looking at. We're looking at going to the new agreement. And so I went ahead just for, just for grins, ran, ran this fuel. And, and we, we calculate this every time. Jamie in the office and Pam, and we, we've, we calculate it every month and it takes, it takes your, your purchase power cost from Midwest Energy, any plant cost, any fuel that's generated, and we average it in and we come up with a cost per kilowatt hour. And that's, and it is a 12-month average and that's the number that we pass on to your consumers. So I, I just ran that to see, had we, had we not, uh, your, this, this particular month, um, I thought I had, I thought I kept it one month, but I went ahead and changed it. This month right here would have been right up here. Your cost per kilowatt hour would have been 5.1 cents a kilowatt hour for that bill. And then I reran it, so the ECA, you know, would have been right here, would have been 5.42 on this, this last bill we just got. You would have paid 5.42 and your, so, and had we done this new contract, we would have paid 4.13. Quite a bit of difference. And that was the, that wasn't the one that he did, that's the, this last one we did. So, uh, this, this one we just got today or yesterday, I just did this this morning. And then, uh, so the difference was 1.29 cents a kilowatt hour. So if you took that time, somebody who's using 800 kilowatt hours, they would have, their bill would have been 10 bucks less just by changing this contract. So I mean, it's pretty substantial. Now, I did want to tell you that, you know, I did that for one month. Again, we average that out over 12 months. So it doesn't, you know, it's, it's a 12-month rolling average. So this, wouldn't be quite this sharp, it'd be, it would be down a little bit and every single month it would go down till after a year, it would all be averaging out. So it's going to, right now, this would have really, I just did this for this one-month snapshot, but it would have averaged these previous 12 months into the calculation. But this is what's in the rates, so the ECA is the difference between that and that. And so we've been passing through this, we would now be passing through this. And the main thing with you guys is, is we're, we're looking at buying the same one megawatt that we're right now paying an average price per kilowatt hour 42 and we're going to buy it for 24. So the math's a little easier than a couple of other cities that are buying more of this, because then they're saying they're taking the one megawatt. That, that's an easy math, but everything else above that, then you've got to get a[1710.04] That, that's an easy math, but everything else above that, then you've got to get a little bit more sharp because you want to compare your market. Where here, you're, you're comparing market plus a $9,000 chunk. So that's, that's, that's what's on the table to us. It'd be the two pieces of it is, the, um, this capacity piece, which would be 17 bucks, $1,700 a month. But again, that it's a capacity contract, but it's on that bill and I showed you. And that way you can drop that off at any time. We don't need it anymore. We can drop it once. If we build capacity or add capacity, uh, he didn't, he is excluded if we went out and bought capacity from another city or something like that. But that's kind of priced at that market price of capacity. So probably not a, you know, necessarily real, a real option anyway. But he said, if you, if you increase your capacity or decrease your demand or don't need it anymore, uh, if you can run it, then you just notify him and he'll, he'll drop that. And we can, or this. And so that would drop 7,900 bucks a month if we want to. But we've got it right now to be safe because not what kind of game. So that, that's what we're buying. That's what we'd be doing. And we have that price. We'll be fixed for $24 for the, for the life of the, or for 10 years. And we, we would been, my, my thought would be is we will do this. We will investigate this right away. Let's see if that makes sense for you guys. And about, well, that evaluation will be comparing the price of whatever price we'd get quoted or we can get that for versus whatever we think the market is. You know, and it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a, you have to kind of project what the market is. Nobody really knows. But yeah, we, we'll see what that price runs. It's, it's in the 30s. Because I've seen that number, but I'm, you know, it changes whenever, depends on what time of year. I haven't seen a new refresh number for probably two, two months. We would look at.
So if I read you correctly, if we buy a half a megawatt capacity instead of the one megawatt capacity, Jeff has to be able to generate three megawatts per two hours.
I have to be able to to generate the peak from last year plus 12%.
Minus 500.
Minus 500.
So right at three.
Right, pretty close to three megawatts.
Three megawatts. Can you do that? Would you got?
Yeah, probably.
4.2 megawatts.
As long as something will go bang, yeah, sure I can.
Well, that's my thing. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's mechanical, but I mean, at this point in time, yeah, sure.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
For 10 years.
I hope so. Hope I'm alive in 10 years.
Well, now, now, uh, that's a good question. Down the road, if we needed to buy more, we could probably, we could.
I'm sure they're probably always going to let you buy more.
Yeah, but it'd be a different price. All right. So it's not, I was going to say that. They use to do it, but if, see, the capacity market, there's a capacity market. The energy market is very transparent. We can track it. That's where I've got these numbers. I mean, I got the numbers. There's, there's, there's a, what we're buying it for through the Midwest Energy, but there is a transparent market. That's what happened in 2014. It, it's, it's really like, I give an analogy that if it's a big pond and I'm selling a gallon of water, he's on the other side of the pond. It used to be, if I'm selling you a gallon of water for five bucks, that included me driving around and handing it to him, getting five bucks and that's a transaction. Today it's marked, I'm going to dump the five gallons into this lake and then he's over on the other side. He dishes five gallons or another gallon out and sends me a payment for five bucks and we're good. But if it's, if it's a market, he might, today I say it's $10 a gallon. And so he goes, okay, so I dumped my gallon in, he dips dips his gallon out and sends me 10 bucks. Well, tomorrow it might be two bucks. So it, it's going to fluctuate. Here, we're agreeing to this price of $2.40. I'm going to dump it in for the next 10 years and he's always going to get it, no matter what everybody else is dishing out at it. So that's, that's this, that's this trans, that's this transparent market that exists, that, that, uh, arrived in 2014. The capacity market doesn't have a clearinghouse, if you will. So the capacity market is whatever anybody will sell it for, you know? So it's whoever's got any length in capacity. You guys obviously want it to be a seller. But there's other cities around here that may have an extra unit that they overbuilt over the years and thus sell it. Thus sell it to you. What are you paying for? 350? I'll sell it to you for 325, you know? So there's a fluid market. But, uh, so right now, today, we could call around and get it for about this price. And that's why it's priced at this, this, three or four years from now, if somebody dismantles a unit or one of these coal plants gets shut down or, you know, uh, what's kind of tricky is these, these wind, the wind farms, they're trying to decide how much capacity those count for. So if those get changed by legislation, then all of a sudden that could get it. So the market goes, you know, there's a lot of shortage for capacity. So now you call the same person that was going to sell it to for three, three and a half and they go, oh, boy. This, I get a lot of calls today. It's six bucks a KW. So it, it, that's the risk of not buying it any today. And all of a sudden the summer, you can't do it. I mean, if it happens this summer, then instantly we are, right away, we'll get pushed on to that for at least one year. Get pushed on to the, the inflated SPP capacity. They basically put it to you. Say, okay, if you're not going to provide it, here it is. And it's eight bucks a KW, eight, nine bucks a KW. But we could call next week and, and somebody built a bunch of units, it might be two bucks. And so we'd go, I'm glad we didn't buy that. But Midwest Energy doesn't want us playing that with theirs. If, if you want to buy more, they'll sell it to you and it's whatever the day's price is. If you want to buy less, I'll let you buy less if you put your own in. But I'm not going to let you buy less just because you've got a brother-in-law that's, you know, threw in a generator in his garage. And I'm not going to let you do that. So that's kind of what he said, excluding buying from somebody else. If you want to buy from somebody else, then do it now. If you want to buy from me, buy from me until such time you can generate your own. That's, that's kind of, I mean, it's pretty fair really. I mean, because they got a, they got a plan for it. They, they're a utility. They're long-term planning. So they don't want you jumping in and out on them.
How old are all of our generators?
Cooper's 57. The OP is 36. And the cat is 17.
You got to think about the, how much more time it'll be running if we went through with this.
Well, and there's another part to that that he didn't tell you. There comes a time in the market in the summertime that if, if Midwest Energy thinks we're getting close to what we can produce price for and the market's still going up, we can choose to generate
Right.
that day and shave it, basically is what we're going to do, which is something they wouldn't allow us to do until now. We can generate it at a cheaper cost than what we can purchase it. Say on July the 29th at 3 o'clock in the afternoon and it's $100 a megawatt and we can make it for 60.
They'll let us.
We can do it. Yes, we can. Yeah. So that's, that's a flexibility that we haven't had since 2004, when they took us over. They wouldn't allow us to do that after that. So that is a, that's a part of it that really is fairly enticing, you know, depending on the cost of what you have in your fuel and that stuff. So there's some, it's more flexible than what it used to be.
And if you want to, uh, I mean, you have to run sometimes anyway to, to.
Exercise that anyway.
Obviously Jeff doesn't want to run that here.
I do, but I don't run very long.
You, you want to run that with your test, run it right in here because you're picking it up because you're.
You're saving money.
You're saving money.
Taking your own load.
Go right here because, yeah. So, so that's, that's, but that's just, that's just your normal business thing.
Yeah.
You run that. But, but in here, you know, we'll do it. So, but generally you're going to find that, uh, your units, you know, really, um, aren't the market. Okay? I mean, your units aren't the market because there's a, the market's being dictated by the bigger units that are out there, uh, running all the time and putting in. And then when, right now, when the wind's kicking on, that's putting all this wind into the market. So it's driving the thing. You guys are basically reacting to the market. Okay? So you, which is fine. It's no big deal, but your, your cost of your unit's going to be generally going to be. But that's not always the case. Something could happen on the, something unusual. They could lose some units. And all of a sudden you get a price signal for $400 or $500 and you're gladly running. Now, you want to be, and Jeff knows that. And Midwest Energy will call, say, you know, hey, start your unit. And then, so he goes and gets there and one, an hour or two later, he's pulling load and doing, they go, okay, shut it off. We're done. That, that, that's not, you guys don't chase the load like that. But if he says, hey, there's been, you know, two or three big plants trip down, it's going to be this way for, you know, six or seven hours. I'd fire it up and run it because you're going to be paying, you're going to offset some costs. So they have that flexibility. The other time is if you lose power, obviously, you guys all know that, if you lose the line coming in, none of this gets to you. So you're either in the dark or you're firing up your generation. If it's, if it's this hour right here, you guys could probably cover your whole load. I'm pretty sure you can. What you're having trouble, what you can't do is that you've got to have enough to, to do load plus reserve. You got to be, you got to apply.
I could do the load. I can't trust the margin.
Yeah, yeah.
That's.
So that's why.
12%.
The 12%. And it used to be 15.
You're going to lose that half a meg. See, if it goes out the last day of July, you're going to lose that half a meg.
You're going to lose this. You don't really have.
I could pull the three. I could probably pull 32, but I probably can't get a whole lot more than that.
But that's your, that's your.
On short order.
Yeah, that's your load. So on that high day, you're in good shape because you don't want to be doing that. You don't want your investment of the unit and stuff. And all of a sudden, it happens to be a 110-degree day and a storm comes through and knock, well, storm, probably storm, but some freak accident happens on the transmission line out there and knocks the grid down. Then you fire up your generator, you cover your load. You know, some, another city that doesn't have it just sits in the dark until somebody gets out and puts it, pulls it up.
It always happens on the day when the wind ain't blowing.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a good, it's a good, but like you're, what you're getting at is this, this thing here, this one half-megawatt doesn't really provide you any energy that just meets that requirement of capacity. So let's keep, same thing.
They're just guaranteeing that you have that much capacity.
As long as it's tied.
As long as they're tied in with us, we have it.
That's right. That's right.
If they go dead, it's gone.
It's gone. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
You're picking up the full.
You're picking up.
It says so in the contract, you know, that if it's gone, you can't expect it. So.
It, it, I use the example of if you're, if you ever, if you're selling rock, I've used this with you guys, if you're selling rock to me and I'm, uh, two or three times a year, I need 10 tons. And I'm going to, but you're going to provide all year my rock, but only two or three days do I need 10 tons. But I need you to be able to bring it in one truckload. I need you to be able to bring it. You're going to have to buy a 10-ton truck, right? So, so even though I'm only going to use that one or two days, if you go out and say, well, I'm going to do this, I'm going to buy a five-ton truck and I'm going to, I got my cousin over there that's going to provide five-ton trucks. And he said, I can use it anytime I want. So that's my 10 tons. Well, okay, now it happens to be that day I need my 10 tons and your cousin's not available. He's taking the truck. I'm saying, where, where's my, my 10 tons? He go, well, I didn't think of you. You're really going to call me for 10 tons. Well, that's the deal. You said you'd always have it. So, you know, you might want to take, you might want to have three of your trucks there and, and so you're not having to run a 10-truck every time I need a ton. But you need to have access to that because I'm, there will come, there could be a time you really need to run. You don't need to have that reserves because you're never, you know, you're not really going to be running those reserves, but you've got to be able to pull them to test. And that's just the requirement of being, they're going to have. And it's really not you guys. It's Midwest Energy. Okay? Your Midwest Energy load and they have to test out at their load plus 12%. And they're going to, they're, they're allowing this to be that because they're going to say, you're going to contribute to that load plus 12%.
They take you as part of their capacity.
Yeah, yeah. Right. Yeah. So you'll show up on their mix. But, but anyway, it's a good, good, so that, and again, that's why we're separate. This thing here, there is a discussion of do you want one megawatt, two or, you know, three quarters of a megawatt? One megawatt's clearly the sweet spot for you guys. You know, it's, it's covered 70, like I said, 70, 74% of your load is covered with that. That's pretty good. Uh, we can work on covering some, we could probably cover another 10 and 15% with that, those peak hours. If we want to do that down the road. But right now you're in good shape. It allows you to, we're right now where the better, the, the price of the market is fairly low. You'll still benefit for that if it starts creeping up. But let's say, let's say it changes and the market does creep up and then we call these guys and say, okay, we'll take that extra peak now. It's going to be priced accordingly. And that, to give you an example of this, that did happen to us and I don't know if Jeff relayed this to you, but we were kind of ready to bring this to you guys in October, November, easily October timeframe. And the price was $24, 24, 2397.
2389.
Yeah. It's what the price was. And we were all ready. The cities were all ready to go. We'd all said, yeah, this looks good. Let's bring, let's get it together. And you do, they're doing the deal with the Next Air directly and then we're doing it with Midwest Energy. And then they, there were some delays on, on this and then this price moved up in the last of the year. And they repriced it, the Next Air repriced it at quite a bit higher. And we're going, all of us, all of us were going, man, because like, you know, for 10 years.
Ain't going to do it.
You know, it's going to be, that makes a big difference because you're locking the 10-year price, but that, it's, it's that sensitive. Where this thing probably went up, uh, 10 to 15% because of this right here. Well, then it came back down and then Midwest Energy threw all of us. That's why we had that LOI that we came to you guys to make sure we're all kind of prepped on it. Says, they want to be able to go back and say, we'll do, we're looking at doing it, but it's going to be at the old price. Okay? And then, and Midwest Energy, to give them credit, they were, they were, you know, they were on good faith here, knowing that if you guys couldn't do it, that's fine. They were going to take it. Okay? But they, they, because they, they, they've vetted it out pretty good. They think it's a good idea. They recommended it. But if you guys said, tonight said, no, we don't want to do it. You guys, we certainly, you're not committed to do it, but if, if you push it back to them, they'll take it and no harm, no foul. You're not going to be happy. And next time we do this, they're probably not going to do it because it was a little bit of a leap of faith. But it's fair because you guys, it's a deal. Uh, and one megawatt's not going to make or break them. So don't, don't feel like you have to. But certainly they, uh, you know, they, their, their expectation was that we would want to do something similar to this.
Well, the other thing you didn't tell them was this been going on for the last couple of years and some of these cities have bought it at 28, 28 and a quarter. As low as 26. We're in the first batch to get it down at this price.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we knew that.
It hasn't been this low before. Sterling and some of the others have bought it in the past couple of years and paid a couple of dollars or $3 more than what we're paying. So it's a pretty good deal.
I can't argue with it. I'm, I'm a little concerned with our generators though.
Well, we, you know.
And, and the thing, the, the thing I'm looking at though is if you're saving, just call it $10,000 a month.
Yeah.
120,000 a year. In 10 years, that's 1.2 million dollars.
Yeah, that's the cost of the new generator.
Yeah.
So we should probably capitalize depreciate, capitalize our depreciation with our savings.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea. And I was going to, I was going to put that out there, that I would, I was, would, this would be a reasonable time to do that. Is to go in there on this fuel, let me just go back to this fuel thing that, that when I was doing this. How this works, and I've gone over this a bunch with you, so I don't want to bore you, but I, I take the average price of all this and you sum it up and your total average price, uh, average amount of purchases with your total average cost, divide it and an 11% loss is 5.8 and then we subtract the 3.1. So it all flows back. But if you were to go and say, change it, let's just change that, I'm just, just for, just for example, .035. Keep in mind that 2.7 is what the charges, it would be 2.3, but I went the wrong way. I'm sorry. Instead of that, you do .2, .027. So do 3.1 cents, uh, fuel adjustment instead of the two. So, so basically, um, a sharing of that. Some of it would go back. So everybody's bill would be better than it was. But then some of it would be retained. The difference between 3.1 and 2.7, so it would be .004 would be retained to the, to the city. And then you could take that difference. It's quantifiable. It's not just a, it's that much per kilowatt hour that you sell could then go into a fund for that generation. So it's kind of like you got 120,000 coming back, you know, create a deal that's 60/60 or 60,000 back or 60, you know, stage back for earmarked or just new generation. Would be, would be a, a pretty good way to do it just because, uh, we're doing, we're, we're able to obtain those savings because we have the generation. If we didn't have the generation, we'd be paying that to somebody else. So instead, put it into a fund that allows you to start saving up to buy that generator.
You know, and that's the thing. I mean, we've got room to put another generator in. And I would even, if we had good generators and we could produce our maximum load, I'd even drop to half a megawatt.
Yeah. Yeah.
As soon as we can, we're allowed to do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We can go one time.
Then you go to saving another $17,500 a month.
Sure. Yeah, guaranteed. Yeah.
Sure. Plus that, the rest off of that 9,000. Sure.
So I mean, in the long run, you could pay for, we've paid in the last 10 years for one, maybe two generators down there.
Take away a little bit.
For coverage.
I call, I call it mailbox money. That's what I call it.
That's a lot of money.
I think it's, I think that's, it's a, it's a good idea to do, to, um, to, to do that, to put in a new generation, to cover that, that little deficit there. And this is a good opportunity to use it. Now, what I would like to suggest is that, um, that we approve this agreement so we can get it to start and approve it as for the one megawatt. With the idea that we, we investigate two other things. One, the five by 16 piece, this is within the next 30 days. The five by 16 and also a recommendation on modifying this, because this won't actually come into play until we just, just did it today. I just sent it over to you guys today. So, um, and then next month will be this month's stuff. So it won't be until the following month. So that, that time won't come in until the end of Mar, uh, end of April. End of April, because it's going to be the first month of March. So it'll be the end of April. So that would be when you need to have it done by. We would have a recommendation to see if we should consider the five by 16 and if we should modify this in order to do a sharing of that, of the benefit.
But if we do the five by 16, it's going to affect this difference of 11,000 a month because we're going to have to pay more for it.
Well, but we're, we're going to, we won't pay more unless we think it's going to save more.
Right.
But the other one is it's going to save it in the summer too, when the load gets higher.
During the summer.
It's kind of an offset.
If, if I'm wrong, yeah, if I'm wrong and, and we pay 33 and it's 30, then yeah.
What's it cost us to generate?
A lot. Yeah, yeah. You, you know what it costs.
Much more, far more than we're paying for.
Far more.
Probably eight and a half, nine cents.
Eight and a half, nine cents.
Because it's all street fuel.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's far more. You, you would. You, you would, you would not wanna generate unless we, I mean, there were times before when the markets were going higher. Which that's my concern is that those days could come back. Anytime you say that's, that's never gonna happen in the energy business, that's what's gonna happen again. But, but in the past, it was a little bit more closer, but right now, there, there, I can't even remember the last time looking at the market. That it was, um, feasible for you to generate to offset energy. But that's what Marshall was talking about, it's, it's just the capacity. It's the capacity that we're buying because of that, the, the deal that I was throwing, because of the chart is, is that, this game. Now, it's not a game, but the, the rules, that means you have to have that capacity. Doesn't mean, you know, chances are it never runs, but it's, it's there and you can.
Well, we haven't yet.
No, no.
We haven't yet.
No, I'm just saying that.
But there's always a chance.
Oh, there's always a chance. And you, and you did, you know, when there's been storms, when there's been.
Yes, we have. Oh, you do, sure.
In '07, didn't we have to run when they took the cross-country power line down?
I wasn't here in '07, I couldn't tell you.
Oh, yeah, you, no, absolutely. You ran, you ran all, good, good memory.
I remember running 13 days one winter in the nineties.
Good, well, I. I figured we generated the whole time, but.
I've, I've only got this right, this, uh, let me see if I got that all the way back to that. I think, uh, let's see where my ECA, I think this one, I only have this going to nine. But I've got it on another sheet that 70 did all the time. You ran a lot. And you ran a lot more back to those. So here's what you're generating. You've only generated some on during those time, during these, these months. But this, this is that column, but back then, yeah, you're right, you ran, there was like a, it was like several days you ran.
In the eighties and nineties, we'd run 70, 75 days a summer.
In 2007, somebody had tornadoes.
Yeah, I'm sure they did.
What you would've done, that cost that month would've been really high. Because, you know, you, you weren't buying for the market and really the market was somewhat flat during those times. Because nobody was buying because everybody was isolated. People that had problems in addition to yourself. So, uh, you have, uh, but it doesn't matter. You just, you, you, you pay whatever it takes to run. And then you roll it into fuel just, but that's why the city didn't let, get left hole in that. But that's how it works. So, but what, what Marshall was talking about was saying, let me just, this, if we buy that generation. So we don't get hung out on that, that requirement at any time, then, then, you know, you've got it. You know, it doesn't have to be super efficient units. It doesn't have to be the high dollar units that's gonna run all the time. Because like I said, it's not gonna run very much. It just needs to be a unit that you can, that will run and can meet the load. And run under emergency situations and also test out to be that.
And if you run it under 100 hours a year, you're, you're not required to rise niche up it. So it doesn't have to have the high dollar exhaust and, and that stuff. As long as it's for emergency only, you can run it that way up to 100 hours a year. So you're gonna save some.
My only thing, the only reason I brought up putting another generator in is if Midwest drops us, you're picking up the whole thing.
Right.
And if it's in the middle of the summer and we're out for four days because Midwest can't do it, can we actually do it ourselves? I mean, if it's in the middle of winter time, can we do it with the school and, and everything else for four or five days straight?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I could put it on tonight.
I mean, cause I know during summer, I mean, we don't have the school necessarily pulling that much load.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you got, you got heat.
Right now, with it being this cold, we're probably at 15, 1550. So that old Pete will pull it. The cat won't.
But I would rather, I would rather have the stuff sitting down there and us making a payment on that than paying for blue sky coverage.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, Mark, that's what I call mailbox money. That's what you're doing to somebody else, wanting to get on the other end.
We're paying for something we can't even use when they drop us.
That's exactly what you're.
I mean, you're paying for a cushion.
That's right. Yeah.
And I mean, I would like to see that at some point, we get away from that cushion.
You're paying somebody, in this case, you're paying Midwest Energy. I'm not saying that, it could've been city XYZ. You're paying their cost of their unit.
Whether we use it or not.
And if you, if there's a storm, they're using it, you're not. There's nothing, there's nothing.
Yeah, you're the guy on the short end of the stick.
Yeah, it's basically what they call that is paper capacity. It meets them on paper. It's not real energy delivered. That's, that's what paper is. Now, if you wanna buy real capacity with real energy, then you need to pay a lot more for it. And I mean, that's what you've been doing the last five years.
Right.
That's, that capacity was real capacity with real energy, but it cost you 9,800 bucks a month, you know? So now, paper capacity with no energy is, is 1,700 bucks a month.
So do we buy the full megawatt of paper capacity or do we buy?
I would say we wanna buy as little of paper capacity as we absolutely have to.
So you're, that's what's in the contract for tonight is the half.
Half megawatt. I mean, we could almost say, we could almost say zero.
I would rather.
We're just about this close.
And we're that close, but then sure enough, they're gonna come out a 95 degree day in July and he's gonna pull 3,100 and they're gonna, and, and they told us this. They said, Midwest Energy said, in the past, we were able to say, let's come out and try it again, let's do, you know.
Yeah, the last time it was fly, it took us flies to do it. And we did it the last of September. I mean, it was after peak season.
Now it's gonna be on a 95 plus degree day and you're gonna have, they're gonna have, be in the piece paper and you're gonna have to.
Today's your day.
And if you don't, and they wanted to be clear, they told us in advance that they don't wanna say, we're not bad guys here. Just wanna make sure you know that you are, we will test you and it is what it is. It's gonna be that. We write down 3,200 and then they're gonna say, okay, your load, we ended 35 minus 32, that's 300 K, 300 KW. Times nine, nine thousand, nine dollars or nine dollars a KW times 12 months. That's what you're gonna pay. So next year.
Pay for the next year.
Yeah, next year, good luck. Let's try it again. Well, you know, it's not a surprise or anything like that.
Right, you know beforehand what you're gonna pay if you don't need it.
Right, so we're saying, golly, why, we're gonna risk that. We know we're gonna test it. We're questionable. So it's worth paying 500 KW at that amount to not gamble.
But I think within the next year to two years with the savings and looking into it, you could have another generator put in there.
But what about maintenance and repairs? I mean, we just spent how much a month ago?
Oh, that's a piece cake. That's just, that's just pocket change.
You put another generator in and drop that 1750 off.
It costs $10,000 goes through the turbos. I mean, it's just the cost of maintenance, you know?
What's a generator cost, Jim?
Oh, a mega and a half cap, probably 600, six and a quarter, I suppose.
If we use our savings and capitalize depreciation for new equipment, then, then we, we're kinda paying for it out of the savings. But we, we can't, this isn't 140,000 a year that we can just go spend. We need to use it to capitalize.
Yeah, right now, right now, the way it's set up, that 140 would just flow back through the bill like I showed you. So if we change that, and I, that's what I was gonna say, come back here in a, a month and a half with a price on that five by 16. And a recommendation on that, that will allow you to sit there and know exactly how much you're earmarking for this project. And I think you need to put it in, cause if you just.
Be careful.
It needs to go into a certain spot that says, this is where it's at. And then the customers are gonna continue to save through the, it's, it's almost, it's a 50/50 sharing or whatever.
I think, I think that's absolutely right. I think you give some back and you retain the rest and you put it towards that power plant.
Yeah, and then everybody's, once you have that, then everybody's gonna share and that, or everybody's gonna benefit from that in the long run too.
Well, yeah, because it's gonna, once you drop the half a meg off and save another 1,750 dollars a month.
Absolutely.
Or eight more years.
And that'll just flow through the ECA then.
Well, then after that, it's just money for infrastructure and everything else.
Yeah, I think this is, this is a one-time, one-time deal and I, and I'll tell you what's, what, in, in, Westar at my house, they just did this with this, uh, Westar had this, uh, the, the Trump administration, the tax, tax cut, catch the jobs act, reduce the, uh, income tax to the corporations. The utilities were forced to, are being forced to give that back. So Westar was getting ready to file for a 10, $10 million rate increase to everybody. Instead, at the same time, this tax refund thing came back that they were having to give back. And it's gonna be an $80 million refund that they're having to give back and, or reduce the rates by 80 million. Because their tax obligation went from 31 to 24. So instead of giving an $80 million refund and then going over and asking for a $10 million increase. They just agreed, went to the commission and said, how about if we give a $70 million refund to everybody, reduction in rates? And that way keeps our 10 million that we needed to do to raise rates. And so we're looking at a $70 million reduction in our electric bills. So that's a good deal. Now, you know, it could've been an 80 million and 10 million increase, but the net is the same. And that's what I'm saying here. If we have a, and I did this run to kinda, and I mean, it's not exact. But I ran through several different scenarios of what a typical residential customer bill would be. Once you do that, it'd be about 4% reduction in everybody's bills, okay, because of this, this change in the wholesale side. Um, it, that based on, you know, 2018 numbers, there's about a 4% reduction on their bills. And so what I'm saying is if we make that little change, it'd be a 2% reduction in everybody's bill. And 2% would go into, to, uh, this, this account for future, for your capacity. I think it's a good idea and, and I think if we, we could set it up by that, by just changing that one deal. And we'll know, that way we know exactly how much is being deferred into that account. So if you want, uh, but we, but I would, I would recommend we go ahead and move forward with this. Approve it with those two action items to be done within two months before the, before the next building. And you guys can decide at that particular time.
Do we have to, is it just one agreement?
Two agreements. It's a capacity agreement.
One for the half a meg and the other one for the $24 fixed.
And again, it says, it states in there that they can, you can cancel. If you do do that, Marshall, you do.
We can drop that.
Drop it one time. So if you build another one, then you drop it to zero will be right.
And that's why I said, you know, if we can do that within the next two years, drop that other half, you save for the next eight.
Yeah, and by the way, that was Jeff's idea. He called me, he called me.
Should go erring out by two.
He, he called me, he called me up and goes, hey Greg, what about, what about if we do get a unit and we do build that up? Can I get out of that? I go, well, you know, you can't the way it's written, but let's, it hadn't even sent it out to us yet, but I've seen the draft. So I called him up and, and Eric goes, you know, that's a good idea. He goes, he's, I'll have to offer that to every other city. And I said, I don't, I don't care. We're the only ones, you know, St. John asked about it. We wanna do it. So if you, I don't care if you put it on others, but we want it on ours. And he said, yeah, he came back the next day and agreed to it, so it's in there.
I was looking at it for your future because I won't be here in 10 years, you know, or I don't think I will be. I might be. But, you know, going forward, it's just a, it's a good piece of candy on that deal. That returns you a pretty good amount of money without stretching your neck out very far. And that's the whole reason that I asked for it, because if you did step into some type of generation or whatever you might do. Then that was always there where you could drop it off and that would be an incentive to help pay for part of your money back.
Yep.
So, and this, and I think, you know, this is just final opinion, but from what I've seen, what I've gone through the last five or six years since I've been back. The city's been spoiled for a long time on the amount of maintenance money that's been spent down there. It's been very, very little, you know, and they expected this deal to stay together like your car does. But every once in a while, you gotta change the oil in your car. And if you don't, you know, and it goes bang, well, that's the scenario that you end up with. And here, you know, there's a lot of maintenance things that need to be done down there. The engines don't run like they used to, but setting is just about as hard on them as running them.
Yeah.
And we got generators that need to be cleaned and stuff like that. So I mean, it's an ongoing, it's just a deal that will always be there. As long as you have it, it's gonna require a certain amount of maintenance, you know, it's a cost to do in business. That's right.
Well, those are my concerns is that they've been saying, just everything you pointed out. I just, I never, I mean, besides that, the cost of us generating the fuel and all that.
We don't generate unless we absolutely have to though. That's the thing. And only in the case, only in the case that the market price would get too high, or the lights go out.
It, it sounds like a daisy. I just hope we never.
And it's a lot of money. I mean, anyway, you look at it, it's a lot of money.
What are you talking about? You talking about build, if you divide new, new units, you mean? Is that what you're talking about? To add another unit, you mean, or just?
Just anything in general, just the cost of it, yeah.
The maintenance, I mean, they really don't run unless we have to have them run.
Oh, we run them every month.
And just like you pointed out, that, uh.
That's a drop in the bucket. Yeah. I mean, you know, clean the generator at $7,000 or $8,000. And they need to be done, but they don't have to be done tomorrow, you know? But you have to remember too, that you're dealing with, uh, one engine that has a lot of age and a lot of hours on it. I mean, a lot of hours. The other one, uh, it's 37 years old, but it's basically brand new. I mean, it was brand new. We put it back together with all new parts, everything but crankshafts, you know, we put it in. It's got, uh, it's got 4,000 hours on it maybe. And I mean, it runs like a top, but it's still a maintenance piece of equipment. So, you know, there's always, it's always there, you know, whether, whether it's good or bad, it's always there. And I mean, they're built to run thousands and thousands and thousands of hours. So, um, you know, that old Cooper's got over 100,000 hours on it. The equivalent of running about 18 years straight. When they put it in, we didn't have a tie, you know, it ran 24 hours a day for years. But it will still run, but it just won't run at the capability of what it would run 30 years ago. So.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe, you know, by making this decision, it reserves our right to do something different on the generation. Uh, it, it, it reserves our right to, uh, do, put a different accounting where we can defer money. If we decide we wanna do that into a, into a generation account. And it allows, it allows us an option to do something to cover our peaks, like with the power later if we want to. So those three things we can, we can do, uh, within the next couple of months. But we do need to, uh, at least, at least approve the energy contract. Uh, if we wanna do the capacity contract later and, and see what we're doing, I, I don't know how, but I don't, I don't know how long we have to wait on that. Cause I know we have to have it by June, so I don't imagine we'd have more than a month to wait on the 500. But again, the, we're, we're gonna need it for the summer. We're gonna need the 500.
So I don't think we'd do anything with it. I, I think we go ahead and approve the, the capacity contract now because I don't.
Nothing's gonna change.
Until you have another, until we decide whether we're gonna put another generator in there to cover that. I don't think you ever drop it until it's turnkey radio fire.
Yeah, and you're not gonna be able to have anything this summer anyway.
If you decide tonight, there's a good chance it wouldn't even be on by this time next year.
Right.
I mean, you know.
That's why I said, if you can do it from now, within the next two years of putting another generator in.
Yeah, and we take, we take, we.
And then you can drop that.
And we've started to build in a, a fund together already to, to be able to do something in two years or whatever to decide. I think it's smart.
I think it definitely needs to go to depreciation. Ryan, what do you think?
So too, you know, it'd be nice to get another generator down there, but.
Give us a cushion.
Give you a little breathing room.
So I guess you're gonna have, we're gonna have to decide, I mean, how are you gonna put that money in a separate fund? Just decide on what it was a year before or have somebody figure, you know, how much the amount.
I could figure a, a way that would allow us to, uh, make it a 50/50 split. And then, then you'll need to figure out how to take, take that amount that you, that every month and put it into that account. Transfer, kind of transfer it out, that, that because we didn't, because we didn't leave it at 31, we put it at 34. So that means there was X amount of dollars collected by the city that was above and beyond what we, what we're doing today. And that, that needs to be earmarked.
But that's. I would truly question the wisdom of doing anything with it other than capitalizing our new plant. Either go back into capitalization. If we give it back to.
Oh, any of it?
I'd take it all.
You mean all of it?
Yeah, I think all of it should probably go into the, the, to the, to the.
The savings should go back into the infrastructure.
Someplace in infrastructure.
You're gonna save already. We're gonna, the consumer's gonna save already.
They will, but.
With the new contract a little bit.
Right.
The, I mean, that fluctuates month to month, but I mean, they.
You're talking about the capacity savings. You got it. That's what you're talking about. You're talking about that capacity number, the difference between the 98 and the 17.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And then the energy, the customer gets to save all the energy.
Just on the energy, right? If, you know.
Then that'll all just flow back to the consumer. That's not bad.
The capacity.
Keep your budget to the same amount that purchasing person power for, but.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, we've already set the budget for 19, so in, in March, we're gonna see a price difference of roughly 10 to 11,000 dollars a month. That money is earmarked for energy already. At the end of the year, you can roll that money right on over into your fund of putting in a new.
That's a good idea. And we know exactly what that number is, the difference between what that is today and that 17.
We pay it out of that account a month.
Yeah, we know exactly what it is.
You know, I mean, that's the thing. We've got it budgeted for this year, for the remainder of this year. That money might as well just at the end of the year be rolled over.
Just make it an end of year transfer?
End of year transfer, whether we decide to float a bond or whatever we can do to purchase a new generator. And then when you go to budget time, you just figure if you wanna do a portion of, I mean, what we basically had $10,000 a month. If you wanna say 8,000 from here on out goes towards that bond, that's what you do when you do budget. And 2,000 of it, you can roll it back into wherever.
You're right, you may not have to flip the bond if you just.
If you save enough, fast enough, yeah. And, and the, the, then all the times that the cus, the consumer will. The difference between this number and this number, the consumer keeps that.
Yeah.
Cause that flows right back to them.
Sure, yeah. I mean, they're gonna see that anyway.
They're gonna, so they're gonna see that through their, the reduced, our reduced. They're gonna, they're gonna see that through their, the reduced, our reduced cost.
Yeah.
I would say a hundred and twenty thousand years is quite a low end, because you estimated it in what, December?
Yeah, but, but, but that, but that, but that piece, a lot of that additional amount was, was that energy that would stay with the consumer. So, so the, the only, the piece we're talking about here is that actual capacity, it's this, it's this.
It's that firm capacity that we've been paying.
So it's, if I go back over to here, and that's, that's a good question, wanna make sure, here's the actual bill. This number here, we pay that every month, it never changes.
That's the same price.
Yeah, it's that, it's this price times that, so, uh, this number here, so the, the reason this, this difference was eleven eight and not ninety-eight was because we saw some benefits between thirty-two and twenty-four. That will still go, that, that's still the benefit to the consumer, that is flow back. So with your piece, you, of, of this exact bill, you would then take the difference between ninety-eight.
And seventeen.
And seventeen goes into there, the benefit between here and here stays with the, will flow back to the ECA what I showed you, so.
That's kind of a misnomer too, because a lot of times the winter months have a higher kilowatt cost than what April, May, June do. So, you know, it might be less April, May, June than what it is here. So it'll move back and forth.
It'll be whatever it is.
Whatever the market is.
Yeah, we're just buying twenty-four.
Yep.
If, if the price of power was twenty-three, then we wish we hadn't had twenty-four, but you can't go, you buy a ten-year deal, you can't go every month. But we're saying generally, you're gonna see prices twenty-four above, and that, that difference will just flow back, so. The only piece that we're pulling out would be the capacity. So I, I mean, I think that's a, that's a great idea, I was just gonna do it through the fuel adjustment, adjustment, but that's even better, since you know exactly what you're talking about. So both, both, everybody benefits there. The city's gonna benefit through, uh, acquiring additional capital for the generation, which ultimately, every, the consumers will benefit in the long term, and the consumers will benefit immediately through the reduction in energy charge, energy cost.
I think that's the route to go. I mean, and I'm.
I don't know how you could look at it any other way.
Yeah, and I don't know how anybody could really be upset with it, I mean.
No, and if we, if we decide. I don't see a law of any, any consequences, but there always is.
No.
Always is.
I'm not gonna complain about this. I would say. Turn the lights out when we're in a nice storm, you know?
Yeah.
Well, we wanna turn them on. Oh, well, we can't, cause our crap's too old.
Right, 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 right.
You gotta put money into stuff, people.
Well, I look at it this way, you know, the, the people before you guys for the last over a hundred years have invested in this community for, for the gift, or the, or the ability to be able to generate twenty-four hours a day when you had to. And I would hate to see it get thrown away, all because of a money issue, you know, just the difference in, you know, the contracts are good, they're a whole lot easier and better. There was a time we had to nominate the gas we were gonna burn in the summertime, and if you missed it, you paid for it anyway, you know? And this is probably the sweetest deal to come down in all the time, and I've been doing this, and that's been a long time, so.
It's a good product, it's a good product.
It really is a good deal.
I, I was, uh, I was excited that we were able to get it in there, it was.
And then to throw in that other deal, shake over air and up a little bit, just made it a little bit better.
I called him last night after Larnin approved it and Stafford approved it, I told him, you guys did it, and he goes, he, you know, he goes, like, no, really? Cause now you gotta decide what he needs to do about that, cause he kind of was counting on everybody. I go, I don't wanna do it. And he goes, you gotta be kidding me. And I said, no. So he got a little bit, he, got, woke him up a little bit, but, uh, I told him we were having a meeting tonight, so.
Any more discussion relating to the topic?
Nope. I'd make a motion to approve the Midwest Energy Agreement for
Both of them.
Both of them, the capacity.
On the best generation, both.
Yep, both.
Second out. Motion and a second. Sanders and Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four one. With no other business, we'll adjourn the meeting with a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries five oh, meeting adjourned at seven forty-five.
Bye.